Call the order, the Bucksport Council meeting for Thursday, December 12th. Roll call, Jim.
Mr. President?
Here.
Jim Ormsby?
Yeah.
Paul Dizette?
Here.
Peter Stewart?
Here.
Presentation of any town council recognitions. Considered minutes of previous meetings, we have town council minutes from 11:14:19, regulatory review from 11:14:19, and infrastructure and property committee from 11:14:19.
Make a motion, accept those.
Second. We have a motion to second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Correspondence, Down East Transportation Ridership, we're November 29. Any questions on that? MMA Workers' Compensation Benefit Report, 2019. Get some money out of them.
Well, what we got is benefit. We got a dividend. This is for the workers' comp sign. For the workers' comp, we got a cash dividend of $3,722. We received $1,602 in grants from Maine Municipal for safety grants that were applied for by some of our departments. The leader program, which is the program that we are qualified for because of our safety ratings, saves us $6,385 a year on our policy because that eight and a half percent credit is applied against our workers' comp premium. And then loss control, who does visits to inspect buildings and stuff, the value of their services was $1,281. So, the total value of the benefits from our workers' comp carrier was $12,990. And some of that is real cash. It's the $3,722 we got in the avoided premium of $6,385 that we received, that we didn't have to pay because of our excellent safety rating, so.
And that goes to all our town employees, so thank you for that, for keeping their words. Ron, please call, 12:41. Anything on that, Chief? Just a regular notice that we had?
You've got another one coming that we just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Ordinance to consider, we have a second reading amendment to Appendix B Council Rules and add Sections 44 and 45. And we will have a public hearing on this later on tonight, so if there's any questions or comments, we can take it up.
That is not on tonight.
It's not on tonight.
It's for next time.
For the next time. Any concerns about second reading here for now? We also have a first reading for amendment to Streets and Road Ordinance relating to the parking at the Marina Parking Lot. Any questions or comments on that from anybody?
We have had some, I've had some emails in regard to this. And if you look at, when you talked about this last time, the direction was that we were going to have the Marina Parking Lot just be for Marina Parking from June 1st to September 30th. And I received emails from several people concerned that for people with ability challenges that the, that parking lot's one of the few accesses to get into the Lighthouse Arts, which has a handicapped access, or the waterfront itself because there isn't. And so, when I, as a result of that, when I put this in the language talks about the Marina Parking Lot shall be reserved for patrons of Marina from June 1st to September 30th with the exception of two handicap spaces, which shall be clearly marked. And the suggestion has been made that should be three handicap spaces in that and 10 spaces that are left for the Marina. But that is, I wrote it with two because that would allow for two designated spaces that were available on a year-round basis for handicap parking, as I said. But that's why I did it. It was at the result of input from people who were concerned that that would, closing that off entirely would make it more difficult. There is, there is parking at the Town Dock Parking Lot.
How many there?
What's that?
How many, how many handicap spaces are there at the dock? Do you know? There's two, there's one on each side of the dock, isn't there?
I think there's two.
I think there's one on each side of that. And is there any down at the, veterans is a couple down there, correct, also, right?
Yes.
Okay.
What is it that makes that area require three rather than?
Well, the three was that only that because the number of, the ability to access the waterfront along there for people with abilities is the, over by the Town Dock or right there, really the two basic, if you're going to utilize the businesses that, that you can enter from the back, which is the Lighthouse Arts.
Which is one business, correct?
Yeah.
It is one business, correct? Michael?
Mike Ormsby, Harbor Master. I have a little bit of different variation on that, only because not all the seniors that drive actually have handicap, you know, stickers. So, if you reserve everything just for handicap, they, they're going to, might be out of luck when they come down. I was thinking, according to the code enforcement, in that number of spaces that we have down there, we actually need one handicap spot. My idea would be to put the first handicap spot just as you come down the hill on the left. That's the closest spot to the walkway and to the lighthouse. And then have one or two more spaces that the, that the public can use and the rest leave for the Marina. I have 48 slips down at the Marina. People pay a lot of money and we only have like 13 parking spaces for them. So, a lot of them have to park elsewhere and come down and bring their stuff and then go somewhere else. I mean, that would be on a weekend day that it's very busy, it's a nice summer day and everybody wants to go boating and I could have half the boats out at a time. So, out of that 48, there could be 20 boats out. So, that's my suggestion anyway. That way, you'd always have a couple of spaces if they don't have a handicap tag. And if they do have a handicap tag, at least you've got one there for them. So, just an idea.
Do you, do you have boaters that would, that have requested handicap parking too that show up?
Couple of years ago, we did. We had one boater that, that said, in fact, he complained that we didn't have a handicap spot. And that was, actually, it was three or four years ago. He's no longer down there, but.
Are you getting, you're not seeing the request?
No. We don't have, we really don't have any, the mariner itself has got stairs to go up into the building, it's not handicap accessible. So, yeah, we really don't need it for the Marina.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
I, no, I think we're all set with you right now.
Okay.
I got one. Nancy?
Nancy Minett, Bucksport Citizen. Thanks, councilors and town manager, for this opportunity to share a few of my thoughts on the amendment to Streets and Road Ordinance related to parking at the Marina Parking Lot. Two of the community statements developed by Bucksport citizens during the heart and soul process came to my mind as I have thought about the proposed change. First of all, vibrant downtown. We treasure a vibrant downtown with small businesses, festivals, parades, waterfront, and art-related opportunities which provide economic development and places for people to gather, promoting a rich, welcoming sense of community. And the second one was on environment. We cherish the beauty of our rural environment, which provides us access and a connection to our natural world, the Penobscot River, the jewel of our waterfront and our maritime connection. A vibrant downtown and our jewel of a waterfront matter to us. Necessary and convenient parking on the waterfront is one way our town supports a vibrant downtown, and it is also limited. I would suggest that the waterfront walkway, events, and festivals held on the waterfront, and all businesses who have access into their businesses from the waterfront walkway should be equally supported by the town and all those who also use the waterfront for recreation. Parking is one of those elements to consider. Mike Ormsby, Harbor Master, suggested a change to the parking of the Marine Lot, deeming, I believe, I could be wrong, half the lots would be designated for Marina patrons. That seemed like an appropriate request. With such a change as he suggested, half the parking spaces would be available for patrons of other businesses and the walkway. The Lighthouse is one such business and it is open year-round. During the transition from a profit business to a nonprofit business organization, the Lighthouse expanded its mission to be that of being a community resource for visual, performing, and literary arts, to provide art instruction for students of all ages and to create a supportive environment to celebrate main artists. Hopefully, there will be a lot of traffic into the Lighthouse in the coming months and years. And providing parking close by is essential for musicians, artists, and other performing artists to transport their equipment and for those who participate in all these offerings who have mobility needs. One of the items in the Bucksport Economic Development Strategy presented, or that will be presented tonight, is to promote waterfront entrances to Main Street businesses. The Lighthouse has a waterfront entrance. And looking to the future, I hope other businesses follow their lead. At least half the parking spaces in the Marina Parking Lot should be for public parking. I hope the council will reconsider the amendment to Streets and Road at the Marina Parking Lot and consider Mike Ormsby's original request. I believe that at least half the parking spaces at the Marina Parking Lot should be for year-round public parking. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Carl Swenson from Bucksport. May I ask Mr. Ormsby a question?
You gotta come up here and help me out. You do, please. Thank you.
Carl Swenson from Bucksport. I have a question for Mr. Ormsby. May I ask him that?
You can direct it to us.
Direct it to you first.
Please.
All right. I was talking to a friend who comes to Bucksport during the summer months and she is very mobility limited. And I mentioned to her what was happening at the town council tonight and that I would be going. She said, "Please ask them something." I said, "Why don't you write them a letter?" And she said, "I don't have time. Why don't you ask them if there's going to be a time limit on the, the people that come to use the Marina for the boats so that they're not booking it for the whole day and they're off on the water and that space could be used?" So, that was the question that she asked me to ask tonight.
Okay, thank you. Rich?
Yes, Patricia Talke, Community and Economic Development Director. Right now, the town is currently in violation of its ordinance. Our ordinance clearly states that the Marina, for the type of business that it is, must provide at least one-third of the parking spaces for that business. That would mean we would have to have 16 parking spaces for the Marina, not including for the public as well. So, right now, we are three parking spaces short already. And this is, again, it is a business that also needs to operate if the town is running it as a business. We need to follow the ordinance, if not, we need to go back and change that ordinance as well. But our ordinance does say that we have to provide one-third parking spaces for the Marina that we have.
And you're basing that off of the 48 slips, correct?
That's based off the 48 slips, yes. So, that means we need 16.
It actually says that, plus one for each employee.
Which we did last night. It does say one for each employee. The employees currently park at the, at the museum, the Historical Society Building, so it's not much.
I'll ask the question, just because we're talking, is this lot, would that be considered employee parking right here, close enough to the Marina to count? I mean, does it state in there where the parking lot, adjacent to the property or adjacent to the, because technically, we own the whole walkway, so this could be considered?
It doesn't state that. It, like Rich said, they're parking at the Historical Society.
I understand, but I'm just, I'm wondering about the ordinance itself. If we own the whole walkway as a, as a business, could we, could technically, could that have been the thought? I, none of us were here when that. I'm just wondering if that could have been the thought? Or on the other side, the Town Dock itself?
I don't know if that's what it says in there, but if we're talking mobility issues, if any of our employees have mobility issues, they should be able to park in that parking lot as well. Right now, we have three parking spots. We have three employees and we, we need more. And we're willing, the guys are willing to still park over in that spot because for mobility, they're close by. But for the, for the Marina boaters, and we agree that there needs to be handicap spots. When we pulled the records of the, the way the lot was designed, the actual handicap spot is the third spot in on the left. And we think it makes more sense to actually have it as the first one so that it's closer.
Are those the old 10-foot parking spots? Or, I mean, is there room for more? If it was repainted and redone with the existing footprint, is there room for more parking spots?
You have three down this side. I believe you could probably get four, but now, when you do handicap, you also have to provide a way for the handicapped to open, like a van. In front of the building, you can't get more than three. And over here, you've got six, you can maybe squeeze out of sevens, you could probably get two additional spots potentially. We're also adding a diesel tank in there as well, so.
We're already using the lawn to park on.
I know, I know. I'm asking the question, too. You know, I'm just asking.
No, no, those make sense. I think, I think we can probably squeeze in two more. One of the spots is a loading, unloading zone. It's not technically a spot, it's kind of in the way if you're trying to get down, but we use it because that's one of the three that we were given. And the other thing, when it was with Port Harbor Marine, the sign said Marina Parking Only. So, also trying to enforce who's parking down there also now becomes an issue because if you want it to be Marina Parking Only.
Well, it's a town issue and it's going to fall to the chief.
Yeah, right. But that's what I'm trying to say.
Or the director, I should say. I'm sorry.
There'll be more questions because there's going to have to be stickered vehicles, someone's going to have to police it, people who are on boats for two days, how long are they going to be there? How do we know who they are? A guest going to park there? There's a lot of questions that need to go with this if we're going to limit that parking.
I would think that if you pay for a Marina slip, you get a mirror hanger.
Something to identify.
And if you don't have a mirror hanger and you're parked in the legal parking, then you get towed. And that would be up to the Harbor Master or Rich to, if they see somebody parked there that's not supposed to be there.
We can certainly police that, why it's going on. We know all the vehicles that are there, so. I'd like to answer the lady's question.
Sure, please.
Just to answer your question, the boaters themselves, they're not restricted how long they can stay out in their boat. In fact, sometimes we have vehicles that are there for several days at a time because they can take their boat out and go off to an island or go out to another port and come back. And that's, the parking is for them to be able to do that, so, yep.
The question was brought up to me, have they looked at the other places like Belfast and Camden because they are limited as far as how long they can load and unload in a parking area?
We have a 15-minute loading and unloading space, but all the other spaces are for parking and it includes overnight parking for people. In fact, we've had a problem in the past in the spring after people, for the wintertime, they'd used to park in there for the apartments. And so, we end up with cars there, there, there. This year, we had one truck and a couple other vehicles that were there for days before figuring out who they were. And they were tenants in the, in the building apartments. And so, we asked them if they could find another place to park because we get so full, you know? And as I said, people spend a lot of money to come down there to have their boats there and I just assume not push them off way down the road somewhere, so, yeah, I'd like to get.
So, Michael, what was your, your, was one handicap and three?
Two.
Two, two, three total spots for public?
Three total spots. The first one, the handicap, that's closest to the, to the Lighthouse. And then two others because not all the seniors have handicap stickers, but they still might have a mobility issue.
But that would all, but that would also allow the folks that are going to Lighthouse or any other businesses that, that are river-facing?
Yep.
Which I heard was one of the, one of the things that was talked about.
You mean, the other businesses up in town?
Anybody that may have a river-facing entrance or something like that, where the Lighthouse does now.
Yeah.
There would be a public parking spot for them.
It could, yeah.
It could be. I mean, that's what you're, that's what you're suggesting is this.
Yeah, but I, what I'm suggesting is not even limiting the Marina people. If the Marina, all the spaces in the Marina are full and those are empty, I wouldn't, not the handicap one, but the other two, I would just say, anybody, yeah. But it's harder to sign that, you know? How do you do that?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you. Tom Paul?
Tom Paul Alon, Bucksport. You've heard me say this often. I mean, I live across the street from a town parking lot that, in my opinion, meets the needs that Rich was talking about. In 90 to 95% of the time, it's virtually empty. Town put a lot of money in that lot. We need to figure out these off-street town parking lots, how we can utilize them. To me, this is a great opportunity for that. If we have to provide transportation for those people down there, I mean, or, you know, when the mill was run, people parked in the back of that parking lot and they had a half-mile walk to, to get to work. They didn't say, "Geez, you've got to provide me a spot right next to my, right next to my, my working space." So, you know, I mean, and, and I mean, the question came up about other towns. I don't know, but I know all the town parking areas in Camden, next to the dock there, they're all two-hour parking, so people can't come and park for overnight there, so, you know, and I, I think to have spots only available for people if they have a boat there is being way more generous.
Thank you. Anybody else? George.
Rusty Way from Bucksport.
I, we can't hear you yet.
People can't hear you at home.
Thank you.
I just would like to comment that I think it's customary for, in most towns where there's a Marina, that there is a loading and unloading spot and then the boat owner moves, parks somewhere else. It seems like a waste to have a lot of empty cars there when people are out taking up spaces. And it makes, makes more sense, that's my feeling.
Thank you.
This is just the first reading.
Yeah. Well, I mean, may as well get it fixed. Anybody else? Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Mary Jane Bush, Bucks Mills. One of the things that I observed and I wrote in an email to Susan, there are families that really rely on parking spaces in the Marina area who have loved ones who really require wheelchairs or other devices to attend events on the waterfront. And that has really been a huge help. The problem is usually the parking lot town dump is, not town dock, forgive me, Town Dock is closed off and inaccessible, okay? Usually, this parking lot for some festivities is also closed off. So, that Marina Parking Lot is really important in terms of handicap accessible spaces.
Is that not closed off at most times? These other ones would be closed off too?
It is.
Correct?
It's closed for every event.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, but I think the point that Mike was making is a good one. There are people who have mobility problems that don't necessarily need a handicap spot as long as you can fully open your car door. So, the actual size of the space really could, you know, in terms of other spots that Mike is looking to recommend, might be helpful, you know? But I think at, at least two handicap spots and one other that would be accessible for those events as well as other purposes would be very helpful.
Thank you. This is the first reading, so we can come back, we can take notes and come back and kind of present these things the next, at the next meeting. We'll have other council members here then too that have been listening to stuff, so. Is there handicap parking, Rich, in the post office parking lot?
Yeah.
No?
The one that we own?
Yeah, right beside the post office.
No, I do not believe there is.
There's not one spot right by the entrance to, between the wall?
It's by the pole.
By the pole?
And then inside, there's a.
Yeah, there's one inside.
Oh, yeah, you talk about the block that we own, the old Kurt Wood, they call it Kurt Wood, the one that the town owns.
I'll tell you what, Rich, or Luke or somebody, if at our next meeting?
Yeah.
If somebody can sort of give us a schematic of what we've got for parking here, I don't, I don't know if that exists someplace, but sort of waterfront parking with handicap and between Main Street and the waterfront?
Between Main Street and waterfront?
Because I know we've added some other accessible spaces over the last couple of years on Main Street to, by, across from the Dairy Queen and places like that, that we've taken, looked at some of these things. So, I think if we get a schematic, maybe just look at this and kind of pose out where things are and where people are going to.
Yeah.
But I do know when, when, when we have things closed off, if a parking lot is closed, they're all closed.
That's right.
Except for way down at the end, correct? Is that what?
That's the only one that stays open. So, when Bay Festival and the Art Festival are going, there is no accessibility parking on the waterfront unless you're here or down the other end.
Okay.
Both parking lots are requested closed by the Chamber and Main Street Bucksport, so there's no accessibility.
Okay. Rich, do you know if there are any handicap accessible spots on this side of the? One right here. Right next to the, sorry, the bathrooms?
Next to the bathrooms?
Yeah, on the dock, on the dock parking?
There's two. There's two. One on either side of the runway, the dock.
Right next to the walkway.
Yep.
Okay. Does that sound like some inventory? We can have another conversation. We can sort of see where we're going with it. And take into account that the new one we're going to do next, next year, behind Andy.
You want to go up towards, I can go up to Franklin because we have one on our street.
I don't jump on that, and absolutely, I absolutely agree.
Yeah.
I mean, we have, you know, during the day, you kind of ride around and there's a lot of empty spots that, that people could end up going to. We don't want to push businesses away, but we don't want to push businesses away from anybody, but if we have unaccompanied cars for days, maybe the suggestion is and the plan is to move up off-street, you know? All right, is that good? You're okay with that and we'll come back at it? Thank you, everybody. Finance Committee. Did the Finance Committee meet?
Yes.
That was us.
That was us, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief update on that. The Finance Committee is recommending to move forward to the council, a request from the town in RSU to do differently how the servers that run all of the computers in town are done. They have brought forward, and of course, I have to, because that makes hard decisions, excuse me. They brought a request for the town's portion, which would be 25% from the vendor of scale computing, the amount would be $18,186.65, which would change the infrastructure that the town servers are done now, is a five-year plan. That's all, pretty much all-inclusive except for the licensing for the users on that, but it provides 24/7 support and disaster recovery and things like that. And again, it was the recommendation of the Finance Committee to bring that forward to the council.
All right, and there's a resolve coming up on that, correct? So, we'll finish that discussion on that. Economic Development Plan update, Richard.
The Economic Development Committee has been working since August on completing the new strategy as recommended by the Comprehensive Plan of 2017. The previous plan was done in 2008, thus making it 11 years old. The committee worked extremely hard. We had lots of public participation at the beginning, it kind of waned off a little bit, but the committee did a good job staying focused and getting through this. We've made changes, we made changes along the way as well. And a lot of the information that was gathered for this report came from ADAPT, it came from the. We've made changes, we made changes along the way as well, and a lot of the information that was gathered for this report came from ADAPT, it came from the Comprehensive Plan, it came from Heart and Soul Value Statements, and again, participation.
Mark, anything else you want to add on that?
No, no, it was a lot of hard work, but we got it done.
Okay.
Hopefully we can take on some of these things next year, I guess I'd add that.
All right. Some of the highs and the highs, faded highs, right?
Yeah.
Just, I, I received an email in, in regard to, that, that had a couple suggestions, and one was that, could there be an additional strategy that identifies the role the town will assume in coordinating and linking information on housing renovation funds with local residents? The, uh, the former, and it relates to the fact that, once upon a time, there were housing rehab grants available to local communities through the Community Development Block Grant Program, and those are now no longer available to individual communities. That those funds are instead funneled through regional agencies, and for this region, Down East Community Partners is the entity that is the gatekeeper for applying for housing rehab. There's an application process, there's a whole host of information, but I, I, this request relates to the fact that, the fact that that money is there and available in some respect isn't widely known by people or how to access it. And we've recently, recently, Councilor Morrison has been looking into this as well, and how to make it more known for people who need this kind of service. What's the town's role in, in providing that information or linking it up? And, and the request was, is there a place in this plan that addresses that, or is that a component that comes out of this plan that, you know, that rehab is one thing, but a way to access that for the public be more? And the second was that, just what Rich just said, that to add a statement that this strategy included the Age Friendly Action Plan, the ADAPT Plan, the COMP Plan, and Heart and Soul, that, that all of those things factored into the development of this plan, which is what he just said, but, but there, there be a statement in the plan. Those were two that I received today.
Do you think the committee would be, I was reading, do you think the committee would be, it sounds like one of those may be part kind of into one of the strategies, maybe, with the housing?
The housing? So there's been work, I've been working with the Office of Community Development in Augusta while this was going on, to learn the new rules, because the program statement has come out for two thousand and twenty. These grants become available at the beginning of the year. You, you have to do the work middle of the year, waiting to see what the funds are gonna be. And a program that, that email, just as Sue said, no longer exists. It's actually one that we put in place as a town when we moved Wilson Hall. Keep the property for five years, make the improvements you say, all forgiven after the five years, if you try to sell it. And we did this with a grant my first year here, where the property owner wanted to sell the building, so we had to collect the funds, because they ended up selling the building. So, working with them, we found out, it's Down East Community Partners, it's not anything the town can do per se to help, except besides facilitate education. It's something that we can put on our website. Also, I have the contact information for the person there, and I am going to request that they come up and hold a workshop, so for everybody, we'll make up a flyer for the newspaper, get it out there, and have a presentation, so that anybody needing the means, you need to be, I believe it's eighty percent in the low to moderate income to qualify for this, and I believe you've had to apply for HEAP as well. So there's lots of requirements, it's a lot different than how the state ran it under the previous administrations, and there is another program as well that, that the Office of Community Development runs, but that's for new housing and requires developer.
Okay. All right, thanks, Rich.
And to add, what you had in the packet from online did not include, but we have included an introduction in the new packet, does, that does represent all the parties that were taken, all the documents that were used for, for the plan.
Okay. Yes. Just stare it there, please, and, and.
Years ago, the town had a housing committee, and in part, that housing committee were, was able to track the needs of individual citizens regarding their properties and what was needed in order to maintain them. And the CDBG program and the consultant that was hired to run it had an ongoing list of people within the town who need, who could have benefited from that program. And so having that ongoing list of needs was critically important. Right now, we have no mechanism to really monitor that. Now, you have blight on your list in your Economic Development Plan. Well, how to prevent blight is to actually have this kind of coordination going on, on an ongoing basis, so that people can get access to make sure their roofs don't leak, their basements are sound, and they have access to well-water, you know, sanitary springs. There are numerous things that were done under the program, but we have no defined process right now to coordinate this. We have USDA Rural Development Program has a lot of funding, but they haven't been able to get that funding out to communities, and I really think the reason why is because we don't have that coordination at the local level. So there's that agency, Main State Housing, as well as one Rich mentioned, that have, we're talking millions of dollars that are accessible. And we have people in our community that are trying to fund repairs on GoFundMe. It's unnecessary, really, because they're entitled to these programs, but we have no mechanism to get that word and connect people to those resources. We need that as part of this plan. And also, under the transportation component, there's a reference about connecting it to the development next to the town transfer station and other senior housing. We need a plan that's going to increase public transportation. Now, those sites could also be part of that, but our sites have to be broader. How can we increase what little public transportation we now have, which probably would be better utilized if we did increase it? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is agenda items, to approve, resolve twenty twenty thirty-one to approve the expenditure of town office and public safety reserve funds for server replacement, which is what we talked about the Finance Committee, right? Anything from the public on this? Counsel? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? And that's a one-time cost out of the thing.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure.
Thank you.
Public safety reserve funds.
I have a motion in a second, how's that? Way to keep me on the, we don't meet that often anymore, I forget all these things.
Nice job. It passed.
How about let's try that again, with a motion in a second, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion did pass. To approve, resolve twenty twenty thirty-two to approve the award of a three-year loan to Machias Savings Bank for a twenty twenty highway truck at a rate of one point nine nine percent.
This is the truck that was approved for purchase by the council in February of this year, and which arrived a little earlier than I expected, but we got three very good bids and one point nine nine percent interest for the three-year was, I thought, excellent.
Motion approved. Second. Have a motion in a second? Anything from the public? Counsel? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Resolve twenty twenty thirty-three is to approve the update to the town of Bucksport Economic Development Strategy. Make a motion to approve. Second. Have a motion in a second? Anything from the public? Yes?
Will the, uh, suggestions that were presented around the plan be incorporated into this plan if you adopt it tonight?
I think we're going with the plan that the economic development.
Is there another place we could address those issues?
I think to the Economic Development Committee, they'll work out through that.
Yeah, we can bring it back to them.
Bring, we're asking to bring the strategy back to them.
No, I think, I think we approve it, but then bring back and when you're, during the economic development, talk about those things, during the committee meetings.
Yes, it's already been worked on in my office.
Correct.
Hi, Nancy Minot, I'm just wondering, is there a, the next step from, I think this is a wonderful economic development strategy, is the next step to strategically then create a plan as to when?
I would hope so.
Is that, is that what the plan is?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure what the next.
I think when all these things were set up and they were prioritized, I, I mean, it's, now it's on us to make sure we implement those things.
Great, so now they're in date, you know, like a strategically, great, great. I just, that wasn't clear, thank you.
Anything else from the public or council? All those in favor? We did a motion, correct?
Yeah.
Opposed? Item E is to approve, resolve twenty twenty thirty-four to approve the use of ambulance reserve for the purchase of a refurbished light pack, fifteen monitor D-Fib. Motion approved. Second. Have a motion in a second? Anything from the public?
If you read the information that they provided on this, this makes us compliant in all three.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Item E is to approve, resolve twenty twenty thirty-five to approve the use of fire department reserve to pay for repairs to engine one. Counsel like the? Motion approved. Second. Have a motion in a second? I would. Anything from the public? From the council?
I would like to say, I liked in the, in the bills that we saw, there's two itemized bills and one that wasn't. And I like to, if we can request the itemized bill, I, I'd like to see that in the future, so we can go down through and see what, you know, we could see exactly from those two companies what we were paying for, and one of them, the most expensive one, it's just a bill, so.
Anything else from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Nine is appointments to the Solar Committee. We have Don White, Nancy Minot, John Eggbrecht, Robert Carmichael Jr., and John Paul Alon. How would the council like to go? Motion approved? Second. Have a motion in a second? Everybody, I hope nobody got nominated, but didn't want to. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes?
The only thing that's necessary, that we were talking about was two counselors were, um, they were looking for two counselors to be involved with this committee as well.
Do you want to do the first meeting in January?
We can do that, we'll have a new.
We'll get a full council.
We'll have a full council, the first meeting in January, that people can choose whether they want it.
Did I see a hand up someplace?
That was the same question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yep. No approval of deeds or, or quit claims? Town manager report.
Thanks to the town office staff for their four hundred and fifteen dollar donation to Bucksport Community Concerns. Each of us donates weekly for the privilege of wearing jeans on the last day of our work week, and the money is donated annually to this organization. And I also want to thank the police department for the hundred and sixty dollars that they raised for the No Shave November, again, for Bucksport Community Concerns, that was donated by the officers. A reminder that the parade of lights has been moved from Saturday to Monday at six P.M. due to the forecast of rain and wind. I certainly hope that we get a better turnout than we might have in a monsoon, but we are hoping for a good time. The plan that was really recently approved by the council for the AARP Age and Ability Friendly Action Plan, if you remember, that was presented to the council, after that was approved by the council, it was forwarded to AARP at, at the national level for final approval. And I'm really pleased to say that, that plan has not only been approved, the reviewing agency at the national level had the following to say about Bucksport. Wow, with a population of just under five K, the amount, quality, and history of work is just amazing. It almost reads like a novel. We lost our primary employer, and I expected devastation, but the hero arrives in the form of forward-thinking and planning for this. This would make a great case study. As you can probably tell by now, this action plan is approved, and please send my congrats to the authors and everyone involved. My only suggestion would be to include some metrics, but from what they are already displaying in their writing, I have no doubt that it will be included. So that's, that's from the national level. Good work. The pool committee continues to meet and has done more work on site evaluation, a meeting where the structural engineer will be held on Tuesday to determine whether the head wall is structurally sound, and there's also an evaluation being done to determine whether or not this can be renovated without ADA compliance, which it currently doesn't meet, and that if ADA compliance is required for any work that's done, that will make a renovation not possible. And congratulations to Main Street Bucksport on receiving a grant for three more public art pieces. They will be soliciting work from local artists, as well as interest from local businesses who may wish to have public art on their buildings, which is another nice event that we can look forward to. I'm pleased to report that we received the testing results from the DEP on our monitoring wells at the former landfill. They were tested by the DEP for the presence of PFAS, the chemical that everyone's hearing about that's from fire retardants and those kind of things. It, there was a presence of this in the wells, but the good news is that it was not in concentrations that are high enough to require any type of remediation. So that was good news for the town. I'm also pleased to report that the State Department of Economic and Community Development has approved the TIF granted by the Bucksport Town Council in July of this year. They have also finalized elimination of the former BERSO tips that were part of the site previously. The TIF for Whole Oceans start with, starts with the twenty twenty-one tax year, but there was no reimbursement to Whole Oceans in that first year. So that is completed. I also would like to note that our former town clerk, Kathy Downs, was recently honored by Hancock County Commissioners with a Spirit of America Award. Congratulations, Kathy, she's here in our audience this evening. I am pleased to report that the solar array at the treatment plant is now in operation and reducing the usage from CMP. Even though it is winter, we should see a significant drop in the bill in the near future. That came online a little over a week ago, so another project that's completed. After the late, last council meeting, I contacted Bill and Mandy Oliver, the principals of Oliver Associates, about the alarm issue that was discussed at the last meeting. I have included the emails from, with the council's packet, and I've provided to the media as well, from Mr. Oliver on this matter. Neither he nor his wife, who were the principals, were aware of the issue, and as you can see from the emails, one of his staff had been involved, but had not communicated the matter to Bill or Mandy. Bill has worked with the engineer that designed the alarm system, and the requested exterior light and ability to send alarm messages to phones will be installed at no cost to the town. He did indicate that the design of the building is such that the alarm system that is already there installed clears the building of any gases in the event of an alarm, which is why the exterior light is not a required part of such an installation. And finally, the annual employee Christmas luncheon will be held on Thursday, December nineteenth, and the town office and transfer station will be closed from eleven to one, as it generally is for that event.
Any questions? Yep. Sorry.
Don White, Town Farm Road, just a question on that PFAS stuff, Susan.
Don White, Town Farm Road, just a question on that PFAS stuff, Susan. What were the standards? Who sets those standards? Is that state or federal?
I believe it's a federal standard, but the, it, the state has the regulatory guidelines. I can provide those on what our level was as compared to what the, the level at which remediation becomes required.
Do you know if they were close or what?
I don't believe they were close. We, we, it was sent to us as good news. Generally, if you're that close to bad news, that's not how it's presented, but the, in addition, our sewer treatment plant sludge, while it had, had also had the presence, we did not have to do anything different in the way we manage our sludge as a result of testing either, so.
The water company has never tested or picked up any concerns for PFAS in our water system, have they?
I don't, the water system I have not.
They don't test.
The landfill and the sewer treatment system, I, I know those answers.
Okay, thank you.
Rich, one question. Notice in your notes that Jay and yourself met with CMP?
Yes.
Would you find out?
November 21st. If you look at the property, we're talking about 27 Main Street, the former Feldman Properties, you'll notice that there are two stakes in the ground. That's where they would like the guide wires to go. We can't touch that hill until those guide wires are moved. The poles are too heavy, and they wanted me to be the middleman and contact all the utilities on the pole, and I put it on CMP to do the work and the following up and staying in contact with them. They're gonna schedule a meeting that's gonna require Spectrum Consolidated, the new owners of the Three-Ring Binder and themselves, and the town. Jay and myself will be there as well.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I forgot one very important item. I need to report a resignation, and it's not from my organi... It's not another one, but it is, does affect the community. I only say that because I've had seven in the last year, and I'm starting to get gun-shy every time I open the mail, but this, the Bucksport Y Director, Nick Tomasco, has submitted his resignation to, he has a very good job offer with another entity that is eight to four Monday through Friday instead of 24/7, or pretty close to it. But the, the Y is working with a local recreation committee to look at a replacement for that position, and the plan is for that replacement to be in place with town in part through its recreation committee by March, the beginning of March. But in the interim, there's a couple more weeks that we have of mixed services, and the Y will be providing other personnel to fill in until that.
So we're not gonna lose any services?
No.
Any, any programming or anything? Anything else?
Rich, quick question, and this is out of left field, so. The building that's on Federal Street, is that, is there a date that's gonna be torn down? Do you know anything about that?
I don't. That was something that, the town, there's a long history with that building.
Okay.
It was part of the Feldman Properties, and it was a history before I was here. A comment that was made was that it was gonna be torn down, but it was not a requirement of this council nor the council in the past, and that's where it was left with the previous code enforcement officer. From that point, I don't, I don't know.
Okay. Thanks.
There, there was a discussion by the current owner at the, at a council meeting earlier this year that it would be removed. That occurred here, but there wasn't, it's not, it's not an enforceable condition, but that was the, that was reported here when the discussion of Wilson Hall occurred.
His resources and time are being focused somewhere else, so.
I did see the top go back to Wilson Hall, but I... Yeah, great. All right. Item 12 is public hearings or approval of licenses. I believe we have one liquor license for George McClellan. We don't need to have a public hearing, correct? How the council like to... Motion approved. Second. Motion a second for liquor license from a college restaurant. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes?
I need signatures.
Item 13 is discussion items not on the agenda for the council and the public. Open it up to the public first.
Hello. It's been a busy, it's been a busy couple of weeks. So Jay, Luke, and myself met today with Wayne from Ready Rock and Angela from Granville Lumber, and we reviewed the Oliver Associates packet that was given out October 29th, presented to the council last month. They explained to me that there's confusion in the language here, that we, that we misunderstood and I didn't clarify to the council. So it was the line in there that said, "Replacement of these walls with a similar block product is recommended." DOT, the product that we have now is not an approved product through DOT any longer, so what they were saying in this, same size, same aesthetically pleasing look. So Ready Rock could potentially be that material depending on who we decide to partner with. So they did give us a quote. What they did say was, that was a little inaccurate, was the size of the walls that were measured. They...
They being Ready Rock?
They being, Ready Rock measured the walls to the last block, whereas what we got from Oliver was a few square feet, 200 square feet off. So what they had given me minus work to rehab the area afterwards was roughly about, and adding a fourth wall, was roughly about 221, so add roughly approximately 30,000, so we can keep it to, it looks like under 250,000 or right at that magic number. What's imperative and what I'm asking for this evening is, with understanding this, the town is trying to get a municipal partnership initiative grant through the MDOT. Now, if we get that, the funding in 2020, we can't start, the project can't happen until 2021, so if we don't get in this next round, we have to wait till 2022. These walls are the first thing you see when we come into this town, and what I'm asking is for the approval to work with Oliver so that we can work on getting an RFP, so that we can get bids. And Granville and Ready Rock have gone way above and beyond and done way more than they would do normally for us by giving us figures and everything, and I have all the information.
I mean, your recommendation is to go forward with this, and then this is the best we're gonna see to be able to fix a serious issue that we have.
Correct, and if for some reason something were to come over, somehow bump over 250 with cost of materials or whatnot, we could look at maybe breaking the project up, maybe the one wall that was added, leave that off, but the first walls, the ones by Ming's Garden and Bridge Street and Mill Street, they've got to be addressed. They have to be addressed.
The, what he's really asking for is permission to, to go forward with the grant application for this project, because that grant application is due in January of this year, and if we wait till January to do it, it's gonna be too late to get an application in, and we're two years out. The council always has the right, as in anything, any grant that's received has to be approved by the council, so if you got it and you didn't like what it looked like, or it was more than you wanted to spend, you can, you can say, no, thank you, but if we don't get in, we don't even have a chance to make that decision.
Is that a motion? Make a, make a motion to approve.
Could, could, I'm sorry, not to interrupt, sorry, but could you take this up as an item not on the agenda to be approved to keep it in the legal form away of how this does, please, and thank you.
Sure. Take a motion to take up an item not on the agenda. Second. Motion a second. All those in favor? So we're looking at taking up a motion, I need a motion for Rich to go forward to look for a RFP. I have to look to get it, to look for grant funding through an RFP.
Yes.
Have a motion and a second. Anything from the, from the public on this? From the council? And like Sue said, this is just getting this all started, so we, something we know we have to get done, and we wanna make sure we get it done right, so. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Rich.
Thank you. Also, yes, I created, I've done a rough draft of an RFP that I will be bringing to the council in January. It is to seek services from a marketing company to help market and rebrand the town of Bucksport. The last time this was done was over 20 years ago, and I just want you to have that on your radar that I will be requesting that next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the public?
So I'm not sure this is 100% appropriate or not, but it seems to clash into the last three items. So what I really wanted to do was to give a quick update on my project, which is 15 Central, right behind 18 Federal, which was brought up, and sort of is something I acquired from the town, and I also have one of those walls that's not far behind the two that Rich is talking about, so that isn't really why I wanted to get up here. But it was more to tell you that that project, which the work on it started in February, is finally coming to a conclusion, and hopefully within the next three weeks, I'll have an open house for this project, which is short-term rentals for the town of Bucksport. I'm pleased with the project. It costs much more than I anticipated, but I think it'll be a good addition to the town. You can also look for it online. We have a main, we have a numerous URLs, but the one we're gonna use is staybuxport.com, and so they'll be available. Hopefully it'll coincide, it looks like, from what I've heard inside the family, that the Main Maritime project is also moving along quite nicely. So hopefully they'll coincide, and if there are folks that come from out of town to stay here, they might choose this place. But the other thing I wanted to say is that I also weighed in on the economic development strategic plan, and I hope that the town takes this plan to heart. I know they also spent a lot of money on a grant that they got for the ADAP plan, and it kind of crosses over in many ways, but the last item that Rich talked about, I think, is really needed in the town, because it's on the cusp of moving forward in a lot of good ways, but for people like myself and Larry is making a, you know, nice investment, it looks like it's moving along in the same direction. I hope you keep in mind that, you know, people do make these investments as well as Whole Oceans and Main Maritime, and there are some of us that are smaller but still have the same intent, and that intent is to support, you know, those projects that are moving forward and bring some, you know, regeneration to the town and some of the buildings that are here. So this is sort of an open invitation. I will publicize it when it comes. I hope you all can find the time to come by, and we've used primarily, the whole project has been done by people locally. They've done a great job. Hopefully you'll find some merit in the project. You'll also notice a little piece of artwork that now stands on Central Street, which has to do with an idea which I hope to present to the town at a later, later date, but this is sort of a, you know, my own way to say, this is what could be, and I hope you keep an open mind to that as well. And again, I'd give you a definitive date, but this project has had many dates that I thought I could say this, but it looks like in a week or two, it'll finally be done, and depending on when furniture arrives, we'll set that date, give notice, and I hope that the council in particular finds the time to come by, and I hope that it, really what it does is it spirits other people to make the same kind of investments, and...
Did you say staybuxport.com?
Yes.
Okay.
If there's anything out there on it now, it's just a placeholder. Luckily, I have a daughter in California that has a really great company that does websites, so that hopefully will be even better than the building, so, thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Anybody else from the public? Anything from the council? I'd just like to thank the Department of Public Safety and the folks in the fire department for the town lighting the other night. That was, that was nice. Unfortunately, the weather's not gonna be good for Saturday, but hopefully a big crowd shows up on Monday. I'm trying to think, there was one other thing that popped out of my mind.
We should thank Counselor Carmichael and Counselor Gobin. This would have been their last meeting, and we did a goodbye for Counselor Gobin last December, if you remember, when he went off the council, and then poof, he came back on to complete an unexpired term, but he's certainly done his best to, and given his job change and things that's been challenging at times, but both counselors did their best to serve this community, and those are our thanks for the work that they've done.
Thank you. Upcoming committee assignments? Do you have anything?
As of January, our committees are dead.
Yeah, so we'll set everything up on January. What's our next, what's our meeting date, January 14?
9.
9, thank you. Our next meeting will be the next decade.
And you'll be electing your mayor and deputy, the first deputy mayor since we've made that change. And everyone who's, who's, the new counselors will be sworn in, and people will be asked to provide what committees they're interested in serving on, so in the, at the second meeting of the month, those can be, so there won't be any committee meetings before the next one, because there's not any committees, so.
I, I know, yeah, John, go ahead.
We did set a, a next decade for the economic development.
Yeah, but that was late January after we have more, the full committee together. One thing I did think about when I just noticed too, is there a way that we can work to get a mic that we can hand out?
I just talked to Jim about that in the hall about 10 minutes ago.
Okay. Is that something we can look at for, for next year? I just, I, I feel that.
Yeah, we've discussed that about it.
Okay.
It's something we're working on.
Okay.
Either that or some drop mics.
Something where we don't have to have folks, you know, it does get discouraging to me to make folks walk up here and just not be able to do that, so. Anything else?
Is there any idea when we're gonna be seeing the ice brick in use?
I don't know. We can ask that question to the Y.
I will ask that question and get back to you tomorrow.
Thank you. It's gonna be 50 degrees. You're right, yeah, we'll ask the question.
Yeah, it hasn't been touched at all this year. I just wondered if anybody, anything's gonna get done with it.
Thank you. Item 15, adjournment. Make a motion to adjourn. Second. Have a motion a second. All those in favor? Good evening, everybody.